Two, I think they said, didn't they?
Okay, guys, we're live. Good evening, welcome to the Milton Planning Board meeting of December 1st, 2011. This is the ninth meeting of the fiscal year. I am supposed to state that this is being both taped and broadcast. I'm Emily Ennis, Chair of the Committee.
Alex Whiteside.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Granny Lynch, member.
Peter Jackson.
Ed Duffy, member.
Great. First item on our agenda is the approval of the past minutes. It should be the minutes for November 21st, 2011. Anybody have any changes?
I've got a few changes. In the deer run lane discussion...
Yes.
The reference to deer run lane as a driveway is, of course, incorrect because it's a street. So I have a change here.
Okay.
You call it the lane?
I call it a street.
Okay.
All right, so we have, just to quickly read it, you want to...
Right.
I'll read it quickly because it's not very long. Paul Sullivan was present and explained his request to decrease the pavement width from 16 feet to 14 feet for the street. Board Member Jackson made a motion to approve the reduction to a width of 14 feet. The board voted unanimously in favor of the change. Okay?
And on the previous page, there's an "of" that we don't need.
Oh, in the first line, under "One Administrative Task", Planning Board approved "the" meeting minutes, not "of" the meeting minutes. I would also say that in that next paragraph, "The Board Confirmed Future Meeting Date of November 21st." We can probably take out "November 21st" because these are, in fact, the minutes for November 21st.
Excellent, Bill.
Any other changes?
Thanks.
Comments?
I move they be approved as amended.
Okay. Do I have all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next few meetings are, or our next two meetings, December 15th, which will be here at 6:30 PM. And then our next meeting after that is January 12th. And I just want to let you know that Pulte Homes will be coming in to meet us on the 12th. They will not have any items of substance for us yet. It's just a chance for them to get to meet us and us to meet them. So they'll be on our agenda at 6:40.
They are the lucky winners of the...
Governor Stotan.
Governor Stotan.
Yeah, so they're getting ready to bring stuff to us. But this is just an initial meeting. Next item on our agenda is Citizens Speak. Now, we do have a public hearing at 6:40 PM for 131 Elliott Street. So if anybody wishes to speak to that, I'd just ask them to hold their comments for another six minutes. I would also like to say that the proponent has requested a continuance until December 15th at 6:40. So he will not be joining us today, but because this is a public hearing...
He is due here at 6:40.
Oh, he will be here at 6:40. Okay, second here. I stand corrected. However, he will not be presenting anything today. We will have that on December 15th. But he will be here to hear the comments. And because it's a public hearing, those comments are, of course, part of that whole process. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on anything other than 131 Elliott? All right. In that case, we have several items of old business, which are the articles for the Annual Town Meeting, which is May 2012. We have a couple of items of new business, which we can have actually... We probably have enough time to begin the discussion on the budget. You should all have received our budget in your packet. The Warrant Committee requested a level dollar budget. So you'll see that for fiscal 2012, we are not presenting a level dollar budget. Why are we not presenting a level dollar budget, Bill? Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Fiscal 2013, I apologize. Fiscal 2013, which the main portion of the budget, the Personnel Services and the General Expenses, is the same as last year. So $17,007. That's broken into Personnel Services of $15,191 and General Expenses of $1,816. What happened there is in order to accommodate salary increases such as steps and lanes, the general expenses had to go down, Personnel Services had to go up in order to meet the $17,007 limit for the level dollar funding. There's also a new line item in there, a master plan of $150,000. That is in there. We're actually going to discuss the article potentially for requesting that town meeting appropriate funds for a master plan. That would be through a separate article and not through our budget. The number's in there just to give the Warrant Committee an idea of how much said master plan might cost. And that's what we have. Do you have any questions on the budget?
Well, if we're not requesting $167.07, we shouldn't say that we are. I mean, if it's a separate item, the master plan, it should be not in our budget.
We could put the $150,000 in a narrative.
You know what?
In a narrative to the article rather than in our budget.
I think that would be better.
Okay.
I don't particularly want to... I mean, I think that we see what happens.
Confuse issues in the budget.
We see what happens with that. I don't... I think that we should have a level budget as requested.
All right, anybody else? Is that agreeable to everybody?
I agree.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine by me. All right, so Bill, the budget would change to $17,007. Any other comment, discussion? Do you have a motion to approve the budget as amended?
I move that.
Do you have a second?
Or I second that.
All right, any other discussion? You're taking this too quickly. We have two minutes to kill before 6:40.
Just one thing, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Bernie.
Yeah, I knew you wanted. Page three.
Yes.
Our former senior administrative clerk?
Yes.
Leave her name in?
Yeah, you leave the name in because it's the position that...
It's filled, somebody's going to fill it.
Yeah, right.
And we have until January 31st to amend this budget. So we could... The budgets are actually due today. We could amend the budget for the new name prior to January 31st.
I imagine the intent of the Warrant Committee was in their budget tables in the warrant, they would carry the old budget to $17,007. And then there would be a separate item in the warrant to fund a master plan.
That's correct. It would be an article.
Yeah, so it shouldn't be in this budget.
I agree. I just put it in there so that we'd have something to discuss.
Didn't forget to talk about it.
Yeah, exactly. It was a good way of reminding it. Something about a six-figure number actually catches people's attention. So, anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. Bill, if you can send that out before midnight, we'll make our deadline. All right, and we are one minute away from our public hearing.
I have a filler.
You have a filler. Give us your filler.
Today is Robert D. O'Leary's birthday. For many years, he was the town council for Milton. Also, on the good news, George Thompson had been quite seriously sick, and he's doing much better.
Excellent, on both counts.
Yep.
So, thank you very much. Anything else for the remaining 20 seconds? Ah, 6:40. You don't have to... Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing for 131 Elliott Street. And I see, Mr. Connolly, you're here to observe. And we are going to be continuing the hearing until the 15th, correct? Okay. Does anybody wish to speak to 131 Elliott? Okay, come forward. Please join us in your name and where you live for the record, please.
Good evening, I am Cheryl Togias. I live at 660 Canton Avenue. I came to this board in the spring following some review of the plans that had been submitted and have had submitted some comments via email and in person at one of the meetings. And I've been following it through the media and through cable since. So I decided it was time to come back and provide some further comments in person. Particularly of concern of late was learning that there is the potential for the additional FAR to be granted, which my understanding is was linked to preserving historic elements of the site, including the tree that was taken down. So I think that is of concern in part because of process. And in other part, it has to do with the scale of the building and the mass of the building, which are issues that I raised before. And in preparation for coming to the meeting, I asked Emily and Bill both if I... When I couldn't find on the website updated plans, I asked them if they could forward plans to me. And they kindly forwarded renderings to me, which show nice images, but they don't address in a scale... They don't address scale and massing in a way that allows you to truly evaluate the scale. And that would be, you know, dimension drawings. So site plan, floor plans, building sections, and building elevations, which show the building in its context. Something which I suggested, I think, last spring and which I don't think are yet available. So I think it's important to continue to advocate for those because I think it really will help evaluate the scale. And particularly where the building is positioned on the site, there are parts of it which are set back from Elliott Street pretty substantially. But how far it's set back on Central Ave and from the T Station. I still have concerns about having blank facades on Central Ave and at the T Station, which behind that blank facade is parking. My understanding is that should really be commercial space, and that would help activate that sidewalk and that intersection. The bike trail's going to be extended. That's an active area for people biking. It could be a great opportunity for somebody to hop off the trail and take advantage of retail in Central Ave area. But if it looks uninviting, it won't be something that people will be inclined to use. And then, lastly, I think I raised an issue about retail service and parking and how that would be handled and how truck deliveries might be managed. And I think those are important because it's one thing to say you're going to make a commercial space or a retail space, but if you don't take into consideration the needs of those retailers, then they may or may not choose to come there. And so it's important, I think, to plan for that at this stage in the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Ellen Denoyer. I live on Capen Street. And I agree with the things that Cheryl has mentioned. I have also been here at previous meetings. And I was particularly dismayed about the fate of the tree. I've sent a letter to the Planning Board, which I believe you have received today. I won't go through it all in detail because I understand, you know, the project is not on the agenda tonight, but...
Oh, it is on the agenda.
It is.
Well, it is.
This is a public hearing. You're welcome to go into as much detail as you like.
Anyway, my concerns are that I think the building is too big, that it doesn't fit into the context, and that the developer has not been a good neighbor. And I have... Can go into more detail on all of those. But I would request that the Planning Board require the developer to comply with the zoning, particularly things like the FAR, the commercial space setbacks. I think I agree with Cheryl. Additional drawings and information are really necessary to understand the project. In particular, I feel that it would be very helpful to see, for instance, an elevation of the project looking along Central Avenue and to see the height of the proposed building relative to the height of the buildings where Esprit de Van is. And I think many more drawings are required to understand the project and to appreciate what I believe to be true, which is I think the building is too big. And I think that the approval of the project should be contingent on improvements. I don't think it's sufficient the way it is. I understand it's been a long process to date. But I think it needs to be, at the rate it's going, a much longer process to get to where it should be. And I also think that approval of the project needs to be contingent on addressing issues with the existing building. And I would think the condition of the building is deplorable. I think for anyone to own that building and let it deteriorate like that and at the same time come to the town requesting approval and consideration of a proposal, I think it's just despicable. And I think it's a very, very serious public safety concern. And I dread having to walk by the building this winter with unclear sidewalks. And I really feel that that needs to be an integral part of the discussion, that the condition of the building, the condition of the site are just unacceptable. And I don't think a developer who wants to do a project in the town should behave that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say we've received another letter, which should be in your packet, speaking in support of a proposal. I certainly appreciate, as I know you do, hearing from the public. And it's great to receive emails. But I've also seen comments in the paper. It is vital at this stage of the process for people, both for and against elements of the project, to come in and have their comments recorded in the public hearing process. It's nice to see that there are comments happening and letters in the newspapers. But those can't be part of the public process. Those comments must come here if people are concerned or if people are happy. And to date, we haven't heard a great deal from the public over our last couple of months of meetings. And this project is really at the stage where we need to continue to hear from people about their concerns or about the things that they like and have those part of the public process. So thank you to both of you for coming in. I appreciate that, yes?
Sorry, may I add a comment?
Sure, come on. Public hearing's still open.
Sorry, to your point about community participation, I found it very difficult to get information about the agenda for this meeting. And the agenda, I was unable to find it on the website, the town website. And I asked Diane Coligan to send me an agenda. The agenda she sent me did not include this project.
Oh.
It is different than the agenda I see people... Right, it was different than this agenda.
Okay.
And that was as recent as this morning. So...
We are... The agendas in our packet last night had this on the agenda. So I don't know if she's working with an earlier version. Pete, you had a problem finding on the website. And she sent you the one...
It wasn't on the Town Clerk's website. I wonder if it was even posted.
It was not on the Town Clerk's website today.
It wasn't on the Town Clerk's website.
It's posted on the town's website in the calendar page.
And when you click on it, there's...
Posted on the Town Clerk's website.
No, it had to be... She went to Jimmy specifically to ask, and he said he found it in three different places, and that was enough.
The date was there.
Right.
But I can show you printouts of what I found. And I, you know, this is the agenda that you find when you click on the calendar today.
Okay.
I know that because of...
And I...
...email, she went downstairs, checked with Jimmy, and he came back and said...
And I can, you know, I can show you the agenda that she sent me this morning. It's very difficult for the public to participate...
Is Jimmy in?
...under these circumstances, so...
Yes.
His wife passed away.
He was here.
Which we should have acknowledged. All the other boards have acknowledged.
We did, thank you. We'll acknowledge it more formally in a bit. I apologize.
And I guess, and obviously, I'm very sorry about that as well. Another concern is that people who are interested in learning more about the project, the most recent minutes that I could find on the website are from June 23rd.
They haven't been being updated?
So as a person who has to write meeting minutes myself, I know it's difficult to get around to them.
We'll check into it. Our clerk is actually transitioning to a new position. But we'll check into it and see what the...
Right.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, though.
I applaud you suggesting that the community should be more involved...
Right.
...as a very motivated person committed to coming this evening. I found it extraordinarily difficult.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate knowing that. So we need to look into what the issue was. Because if they weren't properly posted, we can't be meeting.
We are...
The posting was right, but maybe that the item was not right.
It wasn't on Jimmy's sheet. It was on the town's. It was here in the book. It was noticed someplace else.
Is it on the TV in the hallway there?
That's Jimmy's... That's a direct line to Jimmy's machine.
But we...
That has to... That's the official. It has to be on the...
It's the official posting.
I asked her to go and check. She came back directly from Jimmy and said, "No, it's all set." And that's when she sent the email to Pete. And she didn't send it to Pete?
Yeah, she sent it to me. I saw it, yeah.
All right, well, it wasn't all set, and we want the public to get notice.
If there's a... If potentially anything we do tonight is just informational?
No, I don't think so. I think it's simply the 131 Elliott Street was... May have been informational.
Well, now, I understand...
The meeting was posted.
Thank you, I'll take it.
And the agenda was posted, but it just didn't have 131 Elliott on it.
If... Wait, if the meeting and the agenda were not posted on that rolling thing we have, we're not posted.
That's right. Well, then what you're doing is in... You're going against what the Town Clerk said. He said he found it someplace else.
Okay. In future... Well, it's... The Town Clerk's responsible for making sure it's posted. So if he's saying it's posted, it's posted. However, I would say just to cover ourselves...
You'll get candles, yeah?
Hang on.
You won't have...
Bernie?
Anyone have a...
Hold on. If, just to cover ourselves tonight, we can't take other than our minutes, which we've already done, and our budget, which is going to be problematic, we'll re-vote our budget at the next meeting just to make sure. And we won't take any other votes tonight.
And we can re-vote our minutes.
We can re-vote our minutes if necessary. But we won't take any other votes tonight.
So it's all informational?
It will all be informational. We don't have any other information... I mean, we don't have any votes that we have to take on 131 Elliott, so that's fine. We've accepted information. We won't take any other votes.
We may want to do something about the zoning, but we can discuss it, I guess.
We can always vote it at our next meeting.
But it seems to me the meeting was posted and agenda was posted. Is that right?
It is, but under the new open meeting laws, it has to be the agenda that we're actually discussing. You know, we can't... We're not actually allowed to discuss anything that...
What does the agenda that was posted say?
Does it have 131 Elliott on it? You don't have it in front of you.
The one that I gave her is the one that you have.
Okay.
How she found another one to send out that doesn't have it...
What do we have on... What was on the...
Can you actually...
Could we take a look at that to see what a...
What's on it?
Thank you, Eddie. I forget I'm wired.
When I clicked on the...
Thank you.
...link at the calendar, the date was there, but there was no agenda.
There's no agenda at all?
And when I clicked on the Planning Board website, agendas, there was no agenda.
And this is printed out as of 4:00 PM? This is when you printed it out, 4:00 PM?
That was coming from the calendar.
Okay.
I also looked at the Town Clerk list of 31 pages, and it was not there.
Okay.
It was not there.
That's where it should be.
Yeah.
What is that revolving thing?
That's the agenda that Jimmy...
That's the same thing. If it's not on the website, it's not on that.
This is a new open meeting law situation where you have to put everything you're going to discuss and even backup material that you're going to discuss at the meetings.
So...
And I can give you a copy of the agenda that Diane sent me.
Can I see the one she sent you?
Yeah. And this... She sent me a link to this on the website, but I could not get there on my own.
Okay, thank you.
This one is not the right one because it's the... It's an old...
Old version, okay.
Yeah, because there's things on here that we're not even there.
I questioned her because it said the next meeting was November 10th.
Ah, okay, so it's super old. Well, I apologize for the mix-up to you, so...
Well, you know, I understand people make mistakes.
Right.
And, you know, I'm not trying to demonize poor Diane here.
Right.
But if you want the public to attend, there needs to be much better...
We need to make it a little bit easier. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, so for today, no more votes on anything. We'll go through the materials that we have, and then we'll finish the meeting. All right, anything else on 131 Elliott? If not, we're going to continue the public hearing to December 15th, 2011. At what time are we continuing it to, Bill? Do we have anything else set up for that date yet?
On the 15th, 7:00.
7:00? Okay, 7:00 on the 15th. Thank you all very much for attending.
It says 6:40.
No, it says 6:40. Oh, it does say 6:40.
All right, 6:40.
Never mind.
6:40, let's be accurate.
6:40, thank you, Bernie. 6:40 on the 15th for 131 Elliott Street. Thank you all for coming. Next item on the agenda is discussion of potential zoning articles for Annual Town Meeting. No discussion, no votes.
What about 597?
That is a potential zoning article for our town meeting. It should have been under that. Do we have anybody here from 597? Because if not, we'll go on to the next item.
I have a proposed article, which I said I'd write. Did I give it to you? Why do I have...
It's in our packet.
We have it.
It's on the table.
It's on the table.
Is this the historic preservation?
On the table, yeah.
All right, so why don't you walk us through that?
Let me just run through what I...
It was in our packet.
I'll take a copy of it if you have one of them.
Do we have... Does one have one of these?
Yeah, I know, I thought I saw it earlier.
It's on the table.
It's on the table, apparently, under...
It'll look like this.
This is one.
Yeah, I got it somewhere.
You can have it.
This is next to one?
I have it, I think so.
Okay. We say in a residence, A, AA, ABC District, on a lot which has no... Less than 60,000 square feet. And the St. Elizabeth's parcel has... How much, Bill?
61,000.
61,000, exactly, plus. And a frontage of no less than 475... Take out the square. 475 feet, of which no less than 250 feet shall be on a state highway. And the St. Elizabeth's parcel has 490 square... 490 feet of frontage, and it has 260 feet of frontage on the state highway. And containing a building of which all or a substantial part was constructed before 1875, in which the Historical Commission deems historically significant and important for preservation. And the St. Elizabeth's parcel has a building built in 1870, coincidentally.
Was it 1870 or 1830?
Was it 1830?
I think it was 1830. You could drop it back a few more years if you wanted.
But 1875 has a certain ring to it.
But it does.
There's only one property that meets this.
Okay, the Planning Board can issue a special permit for historical preservation plant unit development.
Yes.
We say the use of the prop... Or the zoning says the use of the property shall be residential, and the minimum number of housing units shall be computed by dividing the total square footage of the lot...
Maximum, maximum. Maximum, maximum.
The maximum number of housing units.
Very important.
Right, the maximum number of housing units shall be computed by dividing the total square footage of the lot, exclusive of wetlands, by the minimum square footage for a lot in the district. And I mentioned what the lot sizes in the various districts are, and for the St. Elizabeth's parcel, it's 7,500 square feet, which divided into the 61,000, comes out to 8.25. So this would permit eight units on the St. Elizabeth's parcel. It says there shall be preservation of open space along the streets providing frontage, and that the open space shall be a landscaped area providing a significant public amenity. It goes on to say that the historical building on the lot shall be substantially preserved in a manner deemed appropriate by the planning board with the advice of the Historical Commission. There's a provision for parking, no less than two spaces per housing unit with some guest and service parking.
How are you going to define guest and service parking?
I, they're going, it's, I didn't want to say a certain amount of parking, I wanted to minimize the parking, because as you pointed out, Reed'sdale Road is a wide street.
There's plenty of people who park along Reed'sdale.
And there are people who park on it. So I, I didn't want to provide for a ton of parking, but I did want, there to be some guest and service parking, yes.
Before we go through this entire thing, I'm a bit concerned that we're calling this a historic preservation planned unit development, when the notion of, you know, doing historic preservation and having a zoning provision that allows it and encourages it, I think, is a great one, but by using that to re-zone a single parcel of land, I think we're missing an opportunity. I think, for example, of the Boyle Estate, we would have loved to find a way to have an opportunity to, you know, redevelop, in fact, it'll come to us again since it's been withdrawn. And I think if we're, you know, if we seriously want to use zoning to encourage historic preservation, maybe we need to write a bylaw that is more than for one, a single property, but kind of can be flexible when there's a historic property we want to deal with.
The Boyle Estate is on, on Brush Hill Road.
Right, it's not a state highway.
And it has, it was built after 1900.
No, I understand that.
And it is a, a big old house that was badly damaged by fire. And when we were discussing our, the subdivision for it, there was discussion of a cluster development, and as you may recall, the, the neighbors were not significantly in favor of providing additional units for a cluster development. This is, you are absolutely right that we maybe, this doesn't fit more than one parcel, but I'm not sure that, I mean, I thought about the Boyle Estate. I said, how would this work with the Boyle Estate? And it, it wouldn't work at all.
Are there other properties for which something like this might work if we expanded the definition of historical preservation?
There are, there are, I don't know of any, any historical buildings being.
Ignore the state highway for the moment. I, I think Pete's point of making this a broader idea is a very interesting one, so take out the bit about the state highway, and just think about the idea of, are there other historical properties in town that we want to preserve? And is there a way of doing that that would include this and also include other properties?
I would.
Can we, can we broaden this idea?
I don't, I don't think that this is broadening.
Is that a word?
I think, I, I really, I mean, there is, this is designed to provide for that lot that they want to, they want to do something with, and it's a, an attempt at accommodation between the 12 lots that they are seeking, which I think is far too, far too more.
I think that it does that well.
Yeah, absolutely.
It does give an incentive to use the PUD and save the building, because there's additional units, and I think that's.
And I, I, it just seems to me that, given the fact that it is December 1st.
We have to move this.
And the, it, the zoning needs to be moved, and I, I think doing something more cosmic is, is, would be, would be difficult.
We can always keep it in mind for a later date.
I, I, I mean, it isn't that we can't change this, or add to it at some point if we, you know, come up with another building. I don't, I don't think the Boyle Estate, for instance, it's, it's burnt out. It's, it's, it's a tough one.
It is a tough one. It's worth thinking about, though. I mean, as long, we still have the public hearings, you know, the warrant closed, is opened and closed in the first week or so of January. We still have to have our public hearing after that, and as long as the changes are within the scope of the article, we have some flexibility to make changes after the public, after the public hearing. Just how, what, what do we want to work within in making those changes? As, as Pete says, skimming the script, so that I can have a chance to look at it from the meeting, it looks good.
If we were to be able to identify.
Other properties.
Other properties, maybe we could, maybe we could do something, but this, this works for that particular site, and it, it actually doesn't work for any other site.
Jim, maybe the Historic Commission might have a list of properties that they would like to see further protected like this, so they could present that to us, and.
I was going to say, that's a really good idea, and that the.
They're experts, we're not.
Historical Commission, and of course, obviously, the proponents need to see this and comment on it at our next meeting, not just see and comment on it, they have to comment on it at our next meeting, because we need to vote this before the, before the holidays.
Okay, let me.
Freeze through the rest of the provisions?
Freeze, yes.
Planning board actually meets December 12th.
Oh, did the selectmen change their date? What's the?
December 12th, right?
Historical Commission, December 12th.
Historical Commission, okay.
Okay. So I, I minimize the parking, two spaces per housing unit with some guest and service parking, just because I'm not a huge fan of parking, but there needs to be adequate parking.
I would have done no more rather than no less.
Outdoor surface parking shall be appropriately screened from adjoining residences and the public streets, so that if they put the parking along the open space, it's got to have.
It's got to be screened, okay, good.
It's got to be screened. The driveway system, attractively designed, provides safe and convenient traffic circulation without a lot of light overspill onto adjacent lots. Housing units shall be in buildings each which contains between one and four housing units. Each housing unit shall have a yard. All buildings shall be attractively designed, the sides and rear shall be given the same amount of care as the front. The building's going to be in design harmony with neighboring properties, and landscaping shall enhance the buildings. No more than 35 feet in height, 35 feet from the street, at least 30 feet from the adjoining lots. And these are the houses. And then I say accessory buildings, including garages, shall not exceed 18 feet in height, and shall be set back at least 35 feet from the streets and 15 feet from adjoining lots. And my feeling here is that if you can put the garages along the lot lines, they will provide.
Screening.
Buffering, as long as, and, and there is the requirement that they have an attractive, an attractive presentation, that they're designed attractively, the backs. And then there's a further, a further requirement here that the 15-foot buffer be, be landscaped so as to provide additional screening.
Okay, good.
Underground utilities, light overspill from exterior lighting shall be minimized. Then we go and discuss the site plan, which has, I think, everything we need. And then we, we have the ability to grant the permit if we find that it can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without substantial derogation from the intended purpose of the bylaws, with such conditions and limitations as may be necessary to safeguard the legitimate use of the property, health and safety of the neighborhood, and as may be appropriate to secure the requirements of this subsection, creating an attractive residential development with public amenity and substantial preservation of this, of a historical, it should be an historical building.
I was going to say.
Yeah, exactly. So that's it, in a nutshell, and if you've got, if people have comments, let me know about them, because.
There's no bonuses here, Al.
What, there is a bonus.
There is a bonus?
This is a six, they could, the frontage, they've got enough frontage for six units.
Right, by preserving buildings.
And this would permit eight units.
Okay.
So it is a two-unit bonus.
Any other comments?
We just got this this evening, so I'm sure there'll be additional discussion and specific provisions.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
The one thing that I do think is a bit limiting is requiring a 30-foot setback from adjacent lots. I think on this lot, you know, that really kind of constricts options, so I, I think we should, I think we should review that.
Bill, is the dotted line the building envelope? What is the dotted, or is it just the current?
What we can do is.
No, no, I know, oh, I see what you mean, yeah.
Draw the, draw the lots with the various setback cost buildings.
It'd be helpful to know what the building envelope is.
Because that's, I just, I picked that out, and I was thinking garages and then buildings sort of more towards the middle.
But it's hard to design in words like this, like if you were doing a four-unit townhouse, you might have the parking underneath the building, in which case, you know. So I, I think, we don't want to constrict the, the design of the site, but, you know, those are things that we can amend. I think the notion of using this to create both an incentive, you know, and an opportunity to develop the site, an incentive for historic preservation, and an opportunity to develop the site in an attractive way that, you know, is, that very well might attract a developer to invest in it, I think, is a good one, and that can achieve some of our objectives. They, we talk about open space preservation, and there's not a lot of criteria related to how the open space works, and that might be some language we want to add, but I think as the beginning of a discussion, I think this is, this is a good approach.
Ed?
My, my question, Al, is more that there's no bonus beyond the 8.25.
No.
So, then to get to Pete's point, there's no incentive to give us any extra open space?
Well, there is, because it's part of the bonus. You get, you get the, the extra units if you do the green space along the frontage and the historical preservation.
Should we consider?
The amount of green space is not defined, though. That's my point.
I think that's something we might have to work on a little bit more, what constitutes?
I, I said a, no, it isn't defined. I said the open space shall be a landscaped area providing a significant public amenity, and it is squishy, but it's something we can determine.
Perhaps one more unit if they give us the bonus space, you know, the open space which we would like to have?
Well.
I think we should look.
I, I think that, I, I'd like eight.
I'd like eight, too, well, but I also want, I also want to preserve as much of the front as we can all the way around. So think about that.
All right.
I've never thought about that. I'd like to define the parking a little bit more, and I think our design, either guidelines or standards, need to be tightened up a little bit.
Okay.
So, but I think it's a great, it's a great amount of work, it's an excellent framework. Thank you, Alex, for doing that.
I agree, they should adopt.
Okay, so we'll take that up again, if nobody else has any more comments, we'll take that up again at our next meeting. So, Bill, you didn't get a chance to print out the, oh, no, you did. Okay, so, Town and Milton Planning Board, it says PB Discussion, December 8, 2011, accessory structure? Oh, no, that's the home occupation, so you not do the accessory structure?
No accessory structure.
No accessory structure. Do you want to talk about what we had thought?
What we discussed was, this is the one that goes back to Mr. Prandak's comment about pool filter, pool filters, generators, air conditioning units, other, other accessory structures. And what we do not have here is accessory structure definition. So my comment, when I was discussing with Emily, was under definitions, we put in accessory structures, and we can list what those accessory structures are.
Well, make a list. There are a million things.
Right around law mores, maybe.
Deseos.
Dog houses, fountains.
Are dog houses significant enough to consider as accessory structures?
It's too small.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, so the idea would be that we would add things like air conditioner compressors, pool pumps, generators, the things that we've been asked about, to the definition of accessory structure.
But they're not, I mean, we don't have a definition of accessory structure, do we?
No.
Well, I, I think that what we, we say is somewhere else, rather than try and define what an accessory structure is, we simply say that these things are accessory structures.
We could do that, too.
Which, which means that we don't have to define everything, it, it simply means that.
Accessory structures include blah, blah, blah.
But not limited to.
Well, no, what I'm saying is this, I mean, we have a provision in the zoning saying accessory structures shall be ex, ex, oh, okay. All right, well, I'd, I'd like to look at this a little bit.
We thought you might.
Maybe you could give a what, what you've got, because I told you last, I told you, I told you last time that I've lost my, isn't that, someone probably took.
Somebody has your zoning book and my master plan book, and is, is sitting there reading them, trying to get to sleep.
You need a new copy of the zoning?
No, 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 I just need, I need to see how he, how he's approaching this. I've lost his comment.
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay.
The, the thing that I don't understand, and I guess I'd like to hear from him on what the issue is that he's coming up against, that he's having trouble dealing with, because I don't understand how much leeway he has in reviewing a set of plans to suggest, you know, does he really need us to put it in the bylaw? Can he just review a set of plans and say, why don't you move your air conditioner over on this side?
But if the air conditioner isn't an accessory structure, they can put it, they can put it, they can put it in the setback area.
Right, exactly. And so presumably, he's getting complaints from people that it's in.
But can he review a proposal?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't even put it on the plan.
Because it's not, yeah, it's not an issue, yeah.
Well.
Mr. Prandak had the question because he's getting air conditioning units and generators.
Right.
The day of the last meeting, I just happened to get a call that a builder in town wanted to know about a geothermal pump and a generator. What's my setback? We don't have an accessory structure setback for that kind of.
But we, don't we have any accessory, we have for buildings?
We do for buildings.
Talk about building, period.
Here's, his actual question.
Buildings include structures.
Yeah, his actual question is, is there a need to add accessory equipment such as air conditioning condensers, pool pumps, and heaters, and other similar equipment to the definition of accessory structures? Currently, these are not regulated.
Right, and I, so if that's really what it is, then adding that language.
Right, we'd regulate that.
And we could put in similar, you know.
Right.
Mechanical or similar building elements, and then have it covered under our accessory structure bylaw, which makes some sense.
That seems the simplest way of dealing with it.
Well, we don't have a definition currently, so.
We do not, no.
We're not going to, it seems to me that trying to define it may not be the best way to approach it, but we'll maybe discuss this at the next meeting.
Okay.
Now, let's why reinvent the wheel, why don't we just check with similar towns, see what they've done, let's do a little plagiarizing.
I think this is, plagiarism is a great idea.
Absolutely.
Unless you're in an academic environment. We'll keep that in mind that you said that. Okay, anything else on accessory structure definition? All right, are we ready for home occupation? If not, we'll move on to, well, we can do the bed and breakfast article. That'll cheer you guys up. But, you know, before we start that, and before I forget again, because I've now got it in front of me, I think that we should have, and Bernie was quite right to remind me, because I did not write this down on my schedule, I think we should have a minute of silence for Jim Mullins' wife, I believe.
Kathleen.
Kathleen, I believe the service is tomorrow at 9:00 at, is it St. Agathus? Okay, that's what I got, 9:00 at St. Agathus. So if you all don't mind, we'll just have a quick moment, or we'll have a full moment of silence for Kathleen Mullins. I'm sure we all extend our deepest sympathies to Jim Mullins.
Just a little background, Kathleen was a teacher in the Milton School system for 30 years. I didn't realize that.
No, I didn't know that either. That's a.
She was a town meeting member in two precincts. She was also on the Milton Housing Authority.
That's an impressive record of service.
Right, and the mother of two, two very lovely daughters.
Well, our deepest sympathies to their family, so. Bed and breakfast. So, I had a look at our zoning, and I had a look at what other towns were doing, as did Bill, and he informed me that much of the zoning in Massachusetts for bed and breakfast were, I believe his term was something on the order of squishy. So I went to Connecticut, had a look at three towns in Connecticut, and I did look at Nantucket, which actually defines them as guest houses rather than bed and breakfast, so.
That's not Connecticut.
No, I, I did go back to Massachusetts, is what I'm saying, sorry, I should have been more clear. Nantucket is in Massachusetts, and they have guest houses, not bed and breakfast. So I looked at Kent, Hamden, and Farmington, Connecticut, all of whom had bed and breakfast, and took a look, and actually, their zoning on bed and breakfast wasn't particularly strict. They had definitions, so I pulled out the definitions. Kent has sleeping accommodations within an existing dwelling limited to three bedrooms for paying guests, and the serving of breakfast only for such guests, provided the owner of the dwelling shall reside in said dwelling. Hamden didn't actually define bed and breakfast, or at least not in what I could find online. And Farmington defined it as a single-family residence in which no more than six rooms are rented for compensation to transient guests. None of the rented rooms shall contain kitchen facilities as defined as having a standard size range and refrigerator. Kent goes on to repeat the same thing under special permit uses, so you are required to get a special permit from the planning board in Kent, and then defines parking requirements. Hamden also, and this is at the end of your package, also requires a special permit for the bed and breakfast use, does not define parking requirements. And Farmington is, it's a special permit use and does define parking requirements. Nantucket didn't have a definition, but they did define, and they didn't have a specific use, a special permit requirement, but they do. but they do have parking regulations. So I looked at our zoning, and I saw that there were two possible ways of doing this, and I gave some base language which needs work, so I bolded where I changed it. The first option is to define a bed and breakfast under section 11, or section 3A, adding a new 11. This would be the same way that the home occupation bylaw was dealt with, and use a similar language. Option two would also add a section 3A 11 and then require it by special permit. So if you do it as a home occupation bylaw does it, it would require only a certificate from the town clerk. If you do it under section six, area regulations, you would add a new subsection in, and it would be a special permit by the planning board. Obviously, the special permit by the planning board would require the public hearing and the usual procedures for our special permit process. The home occupation based bylaw would simply, you know, its application to the town clerk, it would require no public hearing. It is a much simpler method of putting a bed and breakfast, but it does not allow a public process. And so I offered those two options. What I'd be happy to do is either further explore both options. Obviously, we're not voting on anything tonight, but if there is a general feeling that one option is preferable over the other, then I'd be happy to tighten up the language on whether whichever option seems preferable. And that's what I got for you.
It's a good start.
It was meant to be a start, and just basically open up the floor to discussion on something that was a little less nebulous, then let's look at bed and breakfast.
I've got, I've got a couple of questions.
Please.
Under your definition.
Yes.
Where it says, serving a breakfast only for such guests, does that mean they can only serve breakfast? Or they can only serve those guests?
It could mean both, as a matter of fact.
And as it is, it's.
That was taken directly from Kent. You'll notice it's limited, and that's key.
One of the reasons I say that is typically I go to wet bed and breakfast, and you arrive there in the afternoon or something, and they'll have, you know, wine and cheese for you or something like that. So under this.
Boy, you go to good bed and breakfast.
Well, but I just don't know. I understand that they don't want people coming in and having breakfast as a separate activity other than as part of their, you know, accommodations.
Right. My reading of breakfast only for such guests is only breakfast and only for the guests. You know, I am flexible on that. I also put limited to three bedrooms. I'm flexible on talking about the number, but I think three bedrooms looked reasonable given the sizes of the houses we have here. I also feel that the owner of the dwelling should reside in the dwelling. I do not, that is your traditional bed and breakfast. And I personally prefer that definition, that it is an owner occupied bed and breakfast.
The only, the only thing that I see, you know, part of this is to preserve older houses and things like that. I mean, someone retires and goes to Florida, but they want to keep their property here, and they hire somebody to manage their bed and breakfast for them.
I personally don't like that idea. That doesn't mean that I'm not open to discussion on it, but I feel that it is more, people would be more comfortable with the idea that the owner is remaining in the home and is there on site if there are any issues. That's how I see it. Again, completely open to discussing that. In the second option, which was built, was based on our condo conversion bylaw with what seemed to be pieces that were not relevant taken out, I do restrict, or I suggested restricting the bed and breakfast to one building on the site, so that you could not have, you know, you could potentially have your owner living in the barn, converting that to residential, assuming they could get the variances and all of that. But you couldn't have a bed and breakfast on a site that had a house and a barn and have the bed and breakfast, and, you know, two barns maybe.
Or would they need variances if it's allowed by the zoning?
No, what I'm saying is I don't allow it by the zoning. So I, according to.
If they want to put the bed and breakfast in the barn, they can do it under this.
No, it says the building. It can only be the primary dwelling. In the condo conversion bylaw, it allowed buildings on the site to be developed into condominiums. This, I took out buildings and said the building on the site. It's the primary building. They would not be allowed under this, and, you know, if I've missed a couple of words, we can fix that. But under this, it would not allow.
It says any building on the parcel built prior to January 1st, 2011 may be converted to bed and breakfast accommodations.
That was the bit that I missed. There are a couple of others where it specifies that it's one. You'll note in section six, it also says, no new building for bed and breakfast accommodations shall be constructed on the parcel. But we can authorize accessory facilities and structures. That parts from the condo, it may not be relevant. So.
I'm, you know, I'm of two minds of this, which process we go through, because the idea of people being able to convert to bed and breakfasts in a neighborhood without the neighbors having an opportunity to comment, which, you know, the permit through the town clerk's office would allow. But at the same time, I don't think either we, my personal feeling is I don't know if we want to get in the business of conducting public hearings and special plan review for bed and breakfast. And I can't imagine that the ZBA would really want to take on that kind of duty. So I don't know how to do that.
I will note that the other three towns, the three Connecticut towns, it was special permit by the planning board for all three of those. So there is precedent for it being a special permit by the planning board. On the other hand, it is a little bit more onerous. And the reason I bring it to you tonight is we've got a couple of weeks to think about it, and maybe people will give us some public comment.
It could be a site plan review.
We could do site plan review.
Problem I have, I think currently, as you point out, you can run a bed and breakfast as long as you, you probably need a common peddler's license in order to serve breakfast.
It bought a health certificate, wrong.
You can't get that in a residential zone. So you probably can't conduct a bed and breakfast. But as you know, only temporary signs are allowed in residential areas. And the sign review committee, this basically says the town clerk can allow 20-foot.
20 square foot.
20 square foot signs anywhere in a residential zone. And I personally would be offended and horrified if my neighbors or the people across the street did that. And I wouldn't like it one bit.
We can deuce a sign to, you know, one foot by.
Once again, I mean, if this is going to be put out there to attract people, transients to come in and, you know.
Tourists.
Tourists, yes, tourists.
Stagecoach, a stagecoach.
We're talking, we're talking about parents coming to watch their children graduate.
Or it could be drug dealers looking for a nice place to deal their drugs from. I mean, come on.
I don't think drug dealers go to B and Bs.
Where do you think they go?
Well, usually motels.
Do you know that?
I mean, motels are a little more anonymous. But I see your point, Alex.
It seems to me that you are just opening up a commercial activity in all the towns' residential zones. And we have been, I mean, St. Elizabeth's, the people there say, we don't want commercial. And the people up at Temple Shalom, we don't want commercial. And this seems to me just opens up commercial uses throughout the town anywhere, anywhere.
Question number 30 on our master plan survey. In existing large houses with adequate parking where the homeowner has more space than is reasonably needed for the household, should the town allow the following? Condominium units, yes, 51, 57.1%. Rental apartments, yes, 38%. Bed and breakfast, yes, 58.3%.
Did they sign, did anyone sign?
Some people, most people did it anonymously. There were a couple of signatures. 501 people out of the 680-odd people answered that question. Of the rest, no was, for bed and breakfast, no was 32.2%. No opinion was 9.5%, and out of the 501 people who answered the question, 494 answered that. That is statistically significant. All I'm saying is if there is reasonable interest, I bring it forward so we can see if people are actually interested in doing this.
It's a way that older people could probably afford their house, to keep their house.
Well, this is a consideration, especially in this economy, is it would allow people to find other means of getting income from their houses. Now, I will note that our current, our current section three use regulations be accessory uses in residence AA, AB, and C districts. One, in residence AA, AB, and C districts, the following are hereby declared not to be accessory uses within the meaning of the bylaw, either accommodation of or renting space to more than three lodgers, boarders, or paying guests. So the question is, what about less than three lodgers, boarders, or paying guests? Or three?
It almost looks like they could.
So, you know, we're actually, it's nebulous enough that people could be doing this. Now, as Alex points out, they can't be serving breakfast because they can't get a license within a district, within a residential district for serving breakfast.
Why can't I invite an overnight guest to breakfast? I mean, it's my house.
Totally could. That's not the issue. This is the renting space. You don't rent space to your guests. I hope you don't rent space to your guests.
How do they do it in Cambridge? And how are they doing it in Brookline? Are they doing it?
Bill, which, which towns did you?
Again, why don't we just look at their bylaws and see what, how they're doing it?
Which towns did you check? I know you checked Martha's Vineyard, which has 5,000 guest houses.
Glad you said Nantucket having guest houses, because that is how they do it without.
Without it being, being bed and breakfast. Interesting.
And that may be, that may be how the others are doing it, calling it, they're calling it something else. They're not calling it a bed and breakfast.
Okay.
Let's look at their bylaws.
Lexington, I talked to someone there, and they apparently allow bed and breakfast. And I'd be interested to see how they do it.
Okay, so Lexington. What else? We'll check, we'll recheck Martha's Vineyard.
Just so we can plug in a website, bed and breakfast, you know, such a town.
Brookline is pretty.
Brookline's probably got a bunch. Yeah, and I agree that sign is too large. I just threw a number in there to get your, get your reaction.
And we could make the review of the sign, you know, to the sign review committee too, or ask them to, you know, put guidelines together in their sign handbook to which that might apply, because I wouldn't want things all over. But the question is.
That's why I limited to one for property too.
Is this a permit through the town clerk's office, or is there a public process, I think is an important one.
Well, the town clerk would issue the sign under this.
Right.
That's what I'm suggesting, is we have to think of whether we want it to be an easy process that anybody can, you know, pretty easily get a bed and breakfast permit through the town clerk's office, or does, you know, to what degree of public review?
Right.
And if that's the case, what board is going to take on the task of reviewing these things?
Well, presumably the board of health would be involved.
They would have to, yes.
And the town clerk, I'm interested in how the process would work. In other words, where the disappointed out kind appeals if they don't like the town clerk's decision, how that works, and where the appeal goes, and the hearing, what the neighbors, the neighbors who don't like this, what their rights are, whether they have any rights. I think that's, they have no rights.
I think that's the biggest problem with the town clerk approach, is that they do not have, and a B and B is more, a more intensive use of the property than the home occupation bylaw currently allows. And, you know, I put it in there so that we could discuss it, but I will reiterate that all of the stuff I've seen so far, it's a special permit with the planning board. And that does make it much more difficult for somebody to get a B and B, but it does allow that key public process. So.
Just a question for Bill.
Of course.
Don't you have a town planners organization in the Commonwealth?
Yes.
And can't you email all and ask the question?
List serve, yes.
Okay, so he's got this information. 351 cities and towns, I'm sure there are, well, whatever towns have.
There are number, there are that are signed up for it. Yes.
Oh, is it, oh, it's not a matter?
It's on everybody.
It's on everybody. And actually, I'm on it too.
What a resource, you know?
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, I know there's lots of bed and breakfasts out the Berkshires.
I have a few specific comments for you.
Please.
Okay.
Which page, which I should have remembered.
Let's do option one. Option two is ridiculous. That is not a, that is, that's the condo conversion. These are not condos being created. They don't need, they don't need a master deed. I mean, it says master deeds and all sorts of other stuff. It is absolutely not a reasonable possibility.
All right, I'll look for another base.
Do we have any rooming houses in Milton?
No. I mean, do we have provision?
Let's go to option one.
Well, do you even want to do, I mean, if people are saying that they find that the idea of not having a public process is not a good one, then we don't need option one, unless you're just thinking of using option one as the base.
Option one, I mean, you would, well, all right, I had some, some fun comments which.
Give me your comments.
Okay.
As long as they're not too.
Merchandise operations, other signs or other indications of any kind regarding the home occupation shall not be visible from outside. What, it doesn't mean anything. The appearance of the dwelling shall not indicate that there is a bed and breakfast.
That's for the home occupation.
How do you, how do you design a building that, without a sign?
No, the sign is allowed. Look, see, one exterior sign shall be permitted, one.
How do you design a building that indicates a bed and breakfast is being conducted within it?
A little sign out there with a bed showing up.
No, not the sign. It's the design of the building that you can't, this says you can't design the building to make it look like there's a bed and breakfast in the building. And I was just wondering what the design.
You're being pedantic is what you're being. Okay, fair enough. What else?
Bed and breakfast shall not create noise, odor, dust.
Discernible at any boundary of the lot.
And it shall not create any electrical disturbance affecting.
This is actually in the home occupation bylaw, have you know?
And it shall not create any hazardous, potentially hazardous.
That is home, that is the current home occupation bylaw.
Entire section is unnecessary. But the one I like most is I, the bed and breakfast use shall not involve sexually oriented conduct.
That is in the current home occupation bylaw.
Let's not go into that.
I knew you liked that. That's why I left it in. I knew you couldn't resist.
All right, so let's.
I think we need to look at some other communities, because the, I personally like the idea of somehow allowing bed and breakfast in town, but how we do it procedurally, you know, what protections there are for neighborhoods, and the wording, I think, has still got work to do. But I think some, others do it, and, you know, maybe we can find a model that suits us better.
I appreciate that. I will say that I was actually astonished from these three towns in Connecticut at how little regulation there was. You know, when I was looking at, when I was thinking of all the questions that we had brought up in talking about this before, and the issues that we'd been bringing up, and how to keep people from staying so long that they became boarders rather than people going to B and Bs, bringing up signs, so forth and so on. When we look at other towns, their regulations aren't nearly that detailed, and I thought that was fascinating. So I overregulated because I was trying to come up with, you know, use the two bases that we had and try and address the things that I remember that we brought up before. But I just will say that there was precious little regulation in these other towns other than allowing it to use, and I thought that was fascinating. Goes back to your comment about some of the towns being kind of squishy on there.
Well, you know. I asked this question last time, public surf. There was no, there was no reply from any community. There were a couple of people who made a comment and said, you might look at, and.
Well, they're under the radar then.
Yeah.
They're under the radar.
Which, which is when you go back and look at the stuff in Connecticut, why there's so little. It's, and look at our home zoning.
Live free or die.
Yeah, but if you let them be under the radar, you can't tax them, Pete.
Well, you know, if that's really the objective, I mean, that's.
It is not actually the objective.
That's the thing I commented the most on this, when you say, you know, that the purpose is to generate tax revenue.
That was the condo bylaw. That's actually what our condo conversion bylaw.
You know, in a bed and breakfast, where would the tax revenue come from? It's either the permit fee, you know, or it's some kind of increase in the real estate tax, and is that based on it becoming a commercial property or something like that, or it's a hotel tax? But we don't really, you know, there's really no way that,
Yeah.
that, you know, other than the permit fee, we don't have a revenue generating.
Actually, the property tax is an interesting idea. I don't know how they'd be taxed, property. I don't know if it'd be residential. I don't think we do either.
I mean, that was the objection, one of the objections to the home occupation bylaw, and why a lot of businesses didn't sign up, is they feared that this was going to lead into some kind of a tax classification for home businesses, and that's why nobody signed up for it.
Well, the board of health is going to incur some significant costs and.
They would be able to raise fees though.
Inspection and things like that.
There would be inspection fees, and there would be a hotel tax. The town would be able to collect a hotel tax.
But it's not to generate tax revenue. I mean, maybe it is, you know, a little bit to offset some of those costs, but that's, you know.
I think one of the interesting things and the things that you're calling out, that all of you are calling out, is what's currently in our bylaws that I left in, that you guys are noticing.
Yeah.
It'd be an interesting idea to review some of those bylaws. Be an interesting idea to review some of those bylaws over time.
And I think the, you know, there's too much in here about automobile parking. I mean, we already have regulations that you can't park on the street, so they've got to have enough space there.
Well, but the regulations should state that they have enough space for off-street parking.
For example, you know, you're saying two parking spaces plus one per room. Well, you know, if these are located near a transit stop, and if it's a single owner that might, you know, things like that, so I think, you know, our regulations that say no parking on the, no overnight parking on the street, and I'll probably address the parking issue.
But again, in our three towns that we looked at, Nantucket not having that much on their regulations, parking was one of the few things they actually did regulate. And again, I thought that was interesting. Not appearance, not much else, I mean, they mostly relied on their definition of what a B and B was to regulate it, but the things that they were specific about was parking. So, again, just putting that out there for common. So, all right. Anything else on B and Bs? Because if not, yes, please.
Yes, Emily, just a few things. I prefer that I have the permit be issued by the planning board and not by the town clerk. On page one, it says bed and breakfast shall not allow cooking or perishable food storage. I think a microwave oven should be allowed, and also a small fridge, maybe five cubit foot fridge.
Okay.
And then, Emily, on page.
I'm sure I remember these, I'll do it next time.
On page five, at the top, just as that appropriate provision has been made. D is deleted. I would put in D.
Yeah.
The planning board may cause to have a background check made of any applicant.
I am not sure that we are allowed to do that legally. I, I had a job once where I did query checks, and it's very specific who can do query checks and for what purposes. So although I definitely appreciate the idea behind that, I'm not sure we're legally allowed to do that.
Well, if it is legal, we should do it. Okay.
Okay.
Those are my comments, thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, so I think the next one on our list, home occupation. Can we slide right into that since we've been talking about it?
Happy to jump right in.
Great. As usual, welcome and introduce yourself for everyone.
Thank you, Ned Corcoran, 70 Morton Road, here in Milton, and it's been a while since I've been at the Board of this Board, so it's nice to be back.
It's nice to have you back, Ned.
Thank you. And I just accidentally wore a tie that matches the decor of the new chairs in the rooms.
That's very good. You're tying right in.
Very good. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I have submitted a draft of amendments to the bylaw to allow expansion of the home occupation process. And really, and I think, picking up on some of the comments on your last discussion with respect to bed and breakfast, I think that the notion of either introducing a bylaw to allow bed and breakfast, or other expansion of home occupation, I think it's important that there be public process. I think the town and neighborhoods need protection. I think it's incumbent on those who would apply to have spent their time with the neighborhoods to make sure that what they're coming forward can work. And that whether it's the Board of Appeals or the planning board, as the, as the proper hearing body, ought to be able to establish adequate safeguards to protect those interests. And looking at things like traffic, parking, setback, perhaps planted buffers and things like that, to screen impacts that might otherwise exist. So what I've done is, in this case, I've proposed an expansion of the current home occupation by law through a special permit. I think my own feeling on which body should hear it probably leans towards this board as an elected board with public process that's televised, as opposed to Board of Appeals, which is appointed, and while their hearings are public, they're not as publicly viewed. And so I think that's important. I think it's, it's important for the town and for people to understand what's coming and coming before. So I'm proposing to expand the bylaw to allow operation in more than 400 square feet. Expand it beyond operation within the principal dwelling, because currently the bylaw restricts you to an operation within the dwelling. Allow you to use other buildings on the premises, or buildings on contiguous lots in the same ownership. There's certainly examples of properties out there where people own barns, or large detached garages, and those might be ideal for things like exercise facilities, a yoga studio, things like that. And I think that, you know, those, but the operation needs to be contiguous to the ownership, so that the person who's conducting the business needs to be in the same ownership, and ought not to be able to lease out space for the sake of conducting that. And that the permit would be limited in that way, would be limited to the operation during the period of time that the homeowner or the property owner is conducting that operation. So, and in this, in these, you know, this day and age, I can, I can speak for myself as a, you know, a wife who works, who actually travels to work, and with kids at home, it can be difficult for two parents to work out of the house. And have the ability to work and conduct a profession within a premises that might be, you know, in a separate garage from the, from, my example would be if I redid my garage, which is unattached, to allow a law office where I could receive and meet clients, that would be more than 400 square feet. That would ease the burden on someone like me, or someone similarly situated, to conduct a business and use an asset of the property, and do it in a way that respects the neighborhood and the neighbors understand what's happening, have a chance to come in, comment, and the board would have the ability to establish adequate safeguards. Similarly, exercise studios, particularly there are, and with, you know, in Milton, with so few opportunities or areas to expand business opportunities, difficult for someone, again, someone like me generally has to look for, for office space outside of Milton. If there's nothing available, you might have to look outside. That's fine for me. There are, for example, I know people who live in town would like the ability to rely on this provision of service in town, without having to move to a neighboring town to either take advantage of my services, or exercise facilities, or something like that, and do it in a way that's controlled, I think would be helpful. So I propose to amend the bylaw in three specific locations, all within Section Three of the bylaw, which defines the use, the use regulations. The first would be to amend Section Three, subsection A, paragraph six, which defines accessory use, to insert language that would allow, currently the language says accessory use on the same lot within customarily incidental to the above permitted uses, or to the uses permitted in accordance with the following subsection seven, which I also propose to amend, and not detrimental to a residential neighborhood, I would insert on or within a structure on the same lot, or on a contiguous lot that is in the same ownership. So that is accessory use on the same lot, or might be in a separate lot.
Just one question on that, if you don't mind me breaking in. A single contiguous lot? So if somebody had, I'll say, a central lot, and a couple of lots that were attached to that, would you limit them to using one lot? Or would you allow all of the lots to be used?
I think, I would suggest that the, that the bylaw ought to be as broad to allow multiple use, obviously subject to the notion of adequate safeguards, understanding the impacts, making sure that neighbors and the butters' concerns have been addressed. And if there are issues that cannot be resolved for multiple lot use, then it obviously would be limited, it would end up, end up being more limited by reason of the fact of the process, and not simply by trying to artificially determine that it should be one or the other.
Okay.
I think, you know, different parts of town, it makes more sense as opposed to others. You have denser neighbor, neighbor areas as opposed to others, where you might have contiguous lots that are, you know, not surrounded by other occupants, so.
And let me just see if I missed something that you were saying while I was reading this. What is the reason that you're, you think that, I mean, you've got a home on one lot, and you're saying that you own another lot, you somehow should be able to conduct your home occupation on the other lot? Now, why is this? Because your home, I mean, this was, the provision was intended that if you have a home, you can conduct certain limited home occupations in that home, and you're suggesting that you be able to do it if you own another lot with another building on it?
Maybe your garage is on the second lot.
Which is contiguous.
Which is contiguous, yeah.
But it may not be.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, look at the St. Elizabeth's Parce, which is what I was thinking of.
Well, I mean, but a lot is defined as, you can have three parcels making up your lot. A lot is, is basically a separate building lot. And if you own two lots, you can treat them as one lot.
Or you can treat them as separate lots if they are.
But if you treat them as one lot, then you've got a lot with two houses on it, but you don't need the provision for a contiguous lot.
Well, you, you might if they are separate lots, acquired at separate times, with separate, separate buildings, two separate houses. You might own two separate lots with separate houses, and for a period of time.
But the second house is not your home.
Correct.
So it's not, it would no longer be a home occupation. It would be a, an occupation conducted in another building you own.
Correct. And it, but, but conducted in a building that I own, that is contiguous to the home, the lot that contains the home that I live in.
Right.
It's not a non-contiguous lot or building in another part of town.
If it were across the street, you, it wouldn't qualify, but if it's next door, it would. I mean, there's not that there's a significant difference between those two.
But if someone owns a home, and they decide they want to open a exercise studio, so they buy the house next door and turn that into an exercise studio, isn't that a commercial use in a residential area?
That starts becoming problematic. I'm, I'm comfortable, more or less, we can go further into the details, but conceptually, I can understand owning a home and then putting your business in the barn next door, which may or may not be on a separate parcel. I can figure that out. Having, owning your home and then putting the business in a second residential dwelling, that, I think, becomes problematic, so.
I understand that, that is.
So we could limit to an accessory structure, maybe.
I, I would argue strongly not. I mean, in particular, because I know that there are people in town who have done this. And you can buy that next door house, and you can rent it to another family. I'm suggesting that if you determine that you're not going to rent it to the other family, or if you bought it for the purpose of housing your in-laws, and then, you know, they're no longer living there, you want to continue to hold on to it, you have an opportunity to make use of it, and you can do it in a way that is not going to affect abutting property owners, the neighborhood, and can be done with adequate safeguard for parking, traffic, and the like, then you ought to have the ability to apply for a special permit. I think that ultimately, that's obviously a decision for town meeting to determine whether they would accept that level of expansion of opportunity. It's simply an expansion of opportunity. It is not a right granted by the passage of the bylaw, but, or the amendment, but it is an expansion of the opportunity to use that adjoining contiguous structure, which is in the same ownership, for the purpose of that owner, the next door resident, conducting within that facility. And so, you know, it, it allows them, a property owner, to take advantage of the property, to do something that is, I think, reasonable. If they had, that, where if they had a garage, a separate garage on, on their property, they could use that garage. If that property doesn't have a garage, but they do have a, a house on a second lot that's contiguous, treat it the same way.
But there's a dimensional difference between a garage and a house. And there's also a sense of the presence on the street between a garage and a house. I mean, a garage would typically, not always, be set back from the street, and so business use of that garage would be less obvious from the street. Use of a house typically is closer to the street, more visible, more obvious, more likely to look less like a residence. I think, just personally, I think you'd have some difficulties with that at town meeting.
You, you may be right, and I, but I, but I think it's something that town meeting ought to have the ability to discuss, consider, and vote on. And I think that, you know, with adequate safeguards, again, public process, addressing neighbor concerns, you know, if a, if a property owner walks in, files an application with this board, if it's, this is the board, and has full support of his, his or her neighbors to conduct that operation, and it, they demonstrate that there are no parking, traffic, or other implications, then I think that, you know, they ought, that property owner ought to have the ability to try and do that. And I think, certainly, that's, that's an important part of discussion that will take place at town meeting, as to whether that should happen. But I, I would suggest that at least town meeting should have the ability to, to discuss that. I think in today's, the reality of today's world, that those, those types of things can and do happen. And to accept that they're happening, or could happen, town ought to have the ability to take advantage of that.
Okay.
Now, I see that what you're doing is, under use regulations, number six is accessory uses are permitted on the same lot. And you're, that is a particularly important part of the zoning, and it's being significantly and very ambiguously changed here by adding this phrase, or on or within a structure on the same lot, or on a contiguous lot that is in the same ownership. And frankly, I don't understand what it means, but I'm sure that a creative lawyer at some point is going to come up with a meaning that is not what we want. If I don't understand it, if I can't understand this accessory, the change to the accessory, I mean, it's hard enough to understand the current zoning, but adding this phrase that you, you put in, it, it's, I, I don't understand it. I don't understand what the consequences of what you propose would be.
Okay. What I, what I've tried to do is, in three locations, address this, and as I, as I'm listening to your comment, I, I appreciate the, the concern you're raising with respect to the, the issue of the, of the language of paragraph six. I think paragraph seven and paragraph 10 are more important in terms of the language, because they, because those provisions are more specific about what's allowed, how they will be allowed, and whatnot. So.
Just to, sorry, just to break in, I think one of the things that we have to do between now and the 15th is look at B, which is accessory uses in Residence Double A, A, B, and C districts, and see what expanding Section Three, eight, six is expanding when looking at Section Three B.
I think what Ned said is that the, the change to accessory use probably isn't necessary.
Okay.
That's what you said.
Is that what you said?
Essentially, what I, you know, I.
I heard you say less important. I didn't tell you, I didn't hear him say unnecessary.
And, and I will go back and, and look at that, and be happy to come back on the 15th, and tighten that down. I, I, I hear the line, I hear what Alex is saying. I agree that it's probably not necessary. I was trying to be as inclusive as possible to make sure that the, that the amendments would be, would work together, but I think amending paragraph seven.
Okay, paragraph seven.
Also, that's one other thing. It gets a little complicated. This home occupation by law currently is by a business certificate issued by the town clerk. But in what you say and what you add is, you, you. But in what you say and what you add is, you throw in this special permit authorized by someone, but you know, there's, that's the only place it appears. You don't provide for the special permit in the way it probably should be provided for. I mean, if this is all going to be special permit material, then so be it, but.
But then, does that mean that all the home business uses that now Jimmy Mullen gives a permit for, all of a sudden, they're going to have to come and get a special permit?
Just those over 400 square feet.
It may be that a separate section for this particular thing, rather than squeeze it into that paragraph, provide for, maybe in the special permit section of, of the use regulations. But I, I don't think that you can somehow, out of thin air, on a certificate issued by the town clerk, mention that there's a special permit issued by the Board of Appeals floating around there somewhere. It's not clear.
Or planning board.
The procedure gets sort of fuzzy.
Right.
So, needs work.
Your comment.
All right, but just before we send you off to do more work. Sorry, Ned, we're completely wrecking your presentation here.
That's, that's, I would, I would rather have that discussion now because it was my first effort to try to do something. It needs to work, and it needs to work properly. So, working to make sure that it answers the collective concerns here and beyond is important. And, obviously.
I, okay. I just want to bring to the attention of those who don't have the document in front of them, that under 3A7I, which is the uses, you're adding as possible uses, health, fitness, and wellness studios, daycare facilities, and professional offices. So.
No, I wrote in daycare facility.
I was wondering about that.
Before I understood that there was separate.
Right.
State legislation that addresses that issue.
So we can take that part out.
I think you can take that out.
Okay.
And then, I have also considered, for this purpose of inserting after, on the second to last line, which says the Board of Appeals shall determine, I would say the Board of Appeals shall determine that, insert with adequate safeguards, the use of such building will not be substantially detrimental to the use of other property in the neighborhood. So, I think that ought to be.
Now, just to clarify, are you stating the Board of Appeals there definitely, or was that either the Board of Appeals or the Planning Board?
I, I left it as, for this purpose of discussion, as Board of Appeals, because that's what the current language is.
Right.
But I agree, if we're talking about the notion of a separate special permit process.
Then we want to make sure that, okay.
We probably want to recraft this in a way that addresses who the special permit granting authority is.
Right. You don't want to have somebody having to go to more boards than they actually need to, so.
No, we, we have to do that often enough as it is.
Yes, Ed.
Ned, I have a question, several questions. In two, men, two, section three, again, for health, fitness, and wellness studios, should that read for health or fitness or wellness studios?
There, it could be health facility, well, you're right. It ought to be, perhaps some additional, but fitness, it could be a health studio, a fitness studio, a wellness studio.
Okay.
Similar exercise.
Another thing, Ned, about the size change. I'm, I'm guessing that this room is about 20 by 40, just, just a guess. Paul Sullivan might have a better eye than me for, but I'm saying 20 by 40, Paul, pretty close?
Yeah.
That would be 800 square feet. What on earth do you need 800 square feet for? I kind of can see what activity, that would not be disruptive. It would not be disruptive to the neighborhood. There would be needed spaces for.
Well, since Ned mentioned health, fitness, and wellness studios, you could, for example, if you're saying doing Pilates, which I bet you have never done Pilates.
I haven't yet, but I was asking Ned the question.
Okay, go on. I was going to say.
How many people are involved in it?
Well, it depends.
That's what I'm reading, too.
The leader, the leader has to, the employee has, the employer has to live in the house.
Right.
So how many people, I mean, if you've only got three people exercising, it would seem to me that they could.
If you were doing Pilates or ballet or something like this, I'll give you the floor back in two secs.
Yeah, thank you.
So I can finish the statement. If you're doing Pilates or ballet or something like this, and you had an instructor up here, and you wanted to have enough room for everybody to feel comfortable, I would estimate you could fit 15 people in this room.
In this room, yeah.
Yeah. Just to give you a general idea. Okay, and now, Ed, you have the floor.
Well, that's a lot of people.
I interrupted Ned.
I'm going to ask Ned what he has in mind for the use of 800 or 1,000 feet.
Essentially, something that's described as that, five to 10 people with room to spread out and, and exercise with mats on the floor, perhaps some exercise machines, so there's room to set up different stations.
A gym.
In, in essence, in a small gym.
I have trouble with that. I have trouble with the size, Ned.
You done with that? Here's a, we have another thought.
This room's only about 12 by 20.
The carpet tiles are a foot square. No, it's actually a little bit more than a foot square.
15 by 30, maybe.
30.
I think it's less than 30.
15 by 30.
I would say 30.
I'm saying 20 by 40.
25.
Oh, it's not 20 by 40, because that's not 20 feet across.
That's not 20 by 40. No, this is 15 by 25, maybe, something like that.
What does that cost you?
I think we're zeroing in on it.
At any rate.
But it makes my point anyways, but I just can't understand how that's going to be, fit that into a neighborhood and not be disruptive.
But he's not saying 1,000 square feet. He's saying, in the language, he's saying more than 400 square feet. So it could be, because the current restriction is to 400 square feet.
There's no more than 1,000 feet.
Oh, sorry, I was looking further out. Where are you?
The idea is to expand the 400.
Oh, there it is. Sorry, I was looking at the top where it says more than a.
So, so.
You're limiting it to.
I'm limiting it to a maximum of 1,000 square feet.
Right.
What I'm suggesting is that the person with the plan has to come before this board and demonstrate why 800 square feet or 900 square feet or 1,000 square feet.
Or 500 square feet.
Or 500 is appropriate. How many customers are going to receive and serve, what the traffic and parking issues are, what the noise, if any, would emanate from the, from the building, what, and particularly that the neighbors have reviewed it and understand it and are comfortable with it. And with respect to that, if all of those answers get, questions get answered appropriately, then the board would have the ability to grant that. I'm not saying in this case that we simply expand the area to 1,000 square feet without making sure that all of those things have been accounted for.
Right.
Currently, you can use 400 square feet with simple, simply a certificate from the clerk.
Right. So the, and because you're limiting it to a maximum of 1,000 square feet, somebody could come in for a use that requires 500.
Yeah, or 1,000.
Or 1,000, but they can't come in for more than 1,000.
I understand, but 1,000 square feet is big in the residential neighborhood.
It seems to me that you point out the standard that this board should use, but there's no standard currently in the zoning which would guide us in determining how, whether or not to issue this. And this is the problem we always have, that I pointed out that applicants come in and we say, "Well, we'd like to see this because we think it's appropriate." And they say, "That's not in the zoning. What are you talking about? You can't do that." We'd like to have standards in the zoning which guide us in making our decision, because without standard.
But we do have the opportunity to, you know, to use discretion when we do these things. It doesn't have to go the letter of the law. We can use our discretion in wanting something or.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's something that's not mentioned anywhere in the zoning, it gets, it gets quite a, I mean, I, I think that you're, you're right, but it's better if we are simply enforcing the zoning rather than enforcing our, well, you know, we think would be nice.
It's also good if applicants have a reasonable expectation of what they have to provide to us before they show up. So, you know, that, that they know that, for example, I see that it still requires a floor plan, which is excellent, but applicants should know that they have to provide us with a floor plan, with whatever else we require in order to make our decision upfront.
It's in our, it's in our bylaw, but one of the things that I.
It's in our rules and regulations. It's not in our zoning. It's different.
Look under 10.
I did look under 10. I'm saying that it still contains the floor plan, which is in fact under 10. I agree. But that there, there may be more things that we wish to require, in which case it's helpful if people know what that is in advance of their application.
If indeed we're going to consider expanding the floor area that allows some more uses that might have more neighborhood impact, I can see the special permit or process or something. But I suspect that if the people who now get certificates from the town clerk's office and pay $15 or whatever.
$50.
$50 for their certificate.
Well, actually, it's 200, but covers four years.
All of a sudden, have to, you know, pay a fee to go through a special permit process and the public advertisement and all that kind of things. I think the 400 people or so, or I think it's 150 people that have these business certificates, they're not going to come back and get business certificates.
But they don't, because they're under 400 square feet.
Well, that's the question.
Yes.
The special permit process only applies between the 400, I think we should make that clear.
I agree.
That's right. You, you need a procedure that basically, if you.
That not everybody, like, I've got my office in my home, and I don't want to have to come back and go through a special permit process.
Well, but yours is probably not over 400 square feet.
You could make it into 11. You could make it into 11. Do the, put it all in there.
On the new, a new 11.
A new 11.
That's, yeah.
That'll bump my B and B to 12. I've already got a claim on 11. You'll have to move it to 12.
Well, we'll just have it as section blank, you know, if it's filled in.
We'll see how the agenda is numbered next time we meet.
I'm happy to follow.
The number doesn't ring right.
You may want to be ahead, actually.
So this would be a special procedure for home occupations in excess of 400 square feet.
Yeah. Yeah, I think a new 11 makes a lot of sense. That clarifies it for people. Anything else for, and then would you add under section six, a special permit process?
Well, no, I mean, you could stick it all in 11, I think.
Okay.
I think it can all go there.
Yeah, I think that's right.
All right. I just ask, because section six seems to be where we put all of our special permits. So, okay.
Well, we, we put them all over the place.
Keep people on their toes, make them read the whole bylaw. Anything else for Ned? Because we still have two more to go tonight.
That's it.
This is a good start.
Will you be able to be back here on the 15th?
Yes.
Great.
No, I appreciate that. I will, I will do that. And I'll be back before you for other business on the 15th, so.
Great.
I look forward to being here.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Hope we were helpful.
Very helpful. Nice to see you all again.
All right, so we have two more zoning articles and one other item on our agenda. So the next one is the assisted living. Bob, welcome. Introduce yourself for the cameras.
Good evening. I'm Attorney Bob Sheffield from Milton, and I came before the board two months ago and suggested that the board consider putting something in the next town meeting which would authorize and permit assisted living or nursing homes. After that proposal, I drafted this article for consideration by the, by the board. Basically, what it does is it limits the location to areas in a business district or parcels of three acres or larger that would be on a state highway, so that they would not be able to be here and there throughout the town. But say Route 138 or Route 28, there might be an appropriate location that these would be appropriate, while it would not allow it to be in the, in the roads, the regular neighborhoods within the town. We mentioned an addition of section 3A11.
Yes, I noticed that you have claimed.
This is the third time tonight, the 3A11.
Maybe, maybe since Ned was, we'll have him have 11, you can have 12, and I'll have lucky 13.
Where's the 3A11?
This is in the article.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I was, I was.
It's getting late, huh?
No, I was, I was thinking that somehow he'd come up with something a little more substantive than, than this.
Oh, boy.
Basically, it tries to keep it simple insofar as it provides that it requires a permit from the, this party, the planning board. It also would be subject to the rules of site plan approval. The requirements for site plan approval are already in the bylaws. The materials that have to be provided to the planning board for consideration of site plan approval are already defined, so that we have the, the materials that have to be provided to the board and the expectations of both the board and the client would be known. The other thing I found out is that Winter Valley has a certain number of units that are licensed as assisted living and are licensed by the state. So in this article, I inserted that nothing in this section shall prohibit an existing structure located in a residence D, D1, or D2 district or an existing structure used as a hospital under section 3A7E of this section from applying to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for such licensure or certification without compliance with this section. I know that Milton Hospital had certain beds licensed as nursing home beds, and this was for differences in reimbursement proceedings, et cetera. We would not want to inadvertently put something in our zoning that would restrict this type of routine hospital use. Also, conceivably, in addition to Winter Valley, there are other elderly housing locations within the town, and at some point, they may want to designate certain of their units as being either under the nursing home or under the assisted living licensure acts. So essentially, we, we put that out.
I have to challenge you on one part of your definition. You'd said that you were going to limit possible locations to existing business districts and three-acre lots having frontage on a state highway.
Yes.
And then noted that that would keep it, assisted living, from being in regular neighborhoods. I would just like to mention the number of regular neighborhoods that are located along state highways.
Oh, I know, no, they definitely are.
Just call your attention to that.
They definitely are.
Okay.
There, there's no question about that.
Right.
But this, this is a limitation so that it would be roughly 2% of the town in which they could be located rather than 98% of the town.
But would there be a possibility, because you don't limit ownership of the lots, would there be a possibility of somebody assembling three acres worth of lot, of parcels, creating a single lot anywhere along a state highway?
That, that, that would be possible.
Then we should probably limit it by lots.
What's wrong with that? If it's in the right place?
Ah, but it's a.
For instance, for instance, across the street from Milton Hospital, there's a big piece of undeveloped land that a number of assisted living developers have looked at.
On a state highway?
No, I understand that.
Right.
This is what this says, but I'm suggesting that there, the site across from Milton Hospital should be allowed because that would be, that would be a dynamite location for an assisted living facility next to Winter Valley.
Yes.
Next to the hospital.
Right. I agree that I don't like. I agree that I don't like the restriction to state highways.
And so then you'll have to figure out.
Yeah, how you're going to restrict it precisely.
Then, then we could have three possible areas. Number one would be in a business district.
Okay.
Okay. Number two would be.
Why put it in a business district?
Because.
It would be ridiculous. There's no place for it in the business district.
Think of, yeah, think of our three business districts.
It would be a waste of business zone land to put an assisted living facility in a business district.
It would take up land that could be used for other services.
It would take up the entire district.
Yeah. Think, think of our three current business districts. There's not a lot of room for putting an assisted living facility there without getting rid of the current amenities within the business. I mean, you'd kill the retail aspect of the business districts. Where?
Flatley Building on Granite Avenue.
That's not in the business district.
It's a business.
That's a business.
No, that was Board of Appeals.
Yeah, that's not zone commercial, I don't believe.
It's owned to Marty and Carrie.
Flatley Building?
I think it's residential.
I'll bet you ten bucks it's a business district. Look it up. I'll bet you a hundred bucks.
No, I'll, I'll bet you ten dollars.
What's that is?
No, I don't think we can do it on TV.
Or on Town Property.
Parcel, is that?
Right next to the plant, it's over at Barney and Carrie's or Columbia.
Oh, does anyone have the map? Well done, a zoning map. I didn't realize we re-zoned it as commercial.
Very nicely done.
Thank you again.
Good job, Ed.
Thank goodness we were on TV.
So anyways.
Yeah, worth the ten bucks, come on.
That gets us off the track.
Okay. So then, number one would be a business district, I think, because this would be more than likely a for-profit entity. Number two would be on a state highway, which would limit it. And number three would be a parcel of ten acres of a, of a location in the town.
Are there any good sites on the state highway where you think this might be located?
Yeah, I think there's a very good possibility on the Randolph Avenue, up near the, the Hoss Farm would be an excellent.
I apologize.
Excellent location.
Does that have frontage on it?
Is that a single lot?
Does it all back behind?
I think that they would have to have frontage or at least have access.
Is it a single lot or a single parcel? Let's not define, confuse lots and parcels.
That we consider multiple assessors' lots that are in common ownership as one lot.
Okay, so here's my question. Let me return back to my question is what is to prevent somebody from assembling a lot of three acres, you know, a common parcels, common ownership parcels of three acres anywhere along the state highways?
Then.
In all those resi, because, because, just going back to what you said specifically about keeping this from being in residential neighborhoods, this zoning does not prevent somebody from coming up and assembling three acre parcels anywhere along these state highways in a residential neighborhood.
We could put in the requirement that, that it's a three acre parcel as of December thirty first, two thousand and eleven or something like that.
I would put in a date of common ownership.
And that would be, that would be fine.
I'm still looking at the idea of not restricting it to the state.
Mike Salamondo, I think, has three acres, doesn't he?
I think that would be an excellent location.
Two?
Well, I just, just.
Two. We, we had a comment from Mr. Sullivan that it's two. All right.
That would make an excellent location in my mind.
Okay, but then if he doesn't have three by the, by the date, we have to be careful about dates. So I just, I just think we need to look at our definition a little bit more carefully because, as you say, the lot across from the hospital that is not on a state road would be a very interesting lot.
No, by that, I'm, I'm suggesting a third possibility and that is elsewhere in the town on a lot of not less than ten acres.
And do we have such lots elsewhere in the town?
We have one that is across the street from the hospital.
That is not less than ten, okay.
That is more than ten acres.
The old Denominy.
Pardon me?
The old Denominy property.
Yes, it is. The Denominy property and it's between Winter Valley and Milton Hospital and that would make, I think, an excellent site.
All right, but then if we extend our definition to be lots of not less than ten acres, are there other not less than ten acre lots in town that could then have an assisted living facility put on them where we maybe don't necessarily want one?
I have a lot of ten acres.
Would you like to put an assisted living facility on it? Okay, fair enough.
You have a lot of ten acres.
More than ten acres.
What?
More than ten acres.
Then you could put an assisted living facility.
We'll all move up there now.
Right.
You move right in.
Maybe I should refuse that.
What do they say? Hell's assisted living. It would obviously be subject to site plan approval. It would be subject to planning board.
Special permit.
Special permit.
Because I noticed you have a permit but not special permit.
What?
Site plan review in here.
Site plan and per, he says permit, but I think he means special permit.
It does mean special permit.
Yes, exactly. That should be for the, hang on, hang on, we'll take comments in a sec. I just want to, I'm, I'm being pushing, I'm pushing you on the definition because I want to make sure that we've considered all of the consequences of whatever definition we use. So I'm not trying to be too pushy, but I think we need to consider what we're allowing and what we're not allowing.
We're allowing a commercial entity seeking to make money from, you know, providing services to a, a certain clientele.
Right, and I want to make sure that we understand where we're allowing that to happen.
I think it's right because it is a commercial use in a resident, in, in all residential zones.
Yes, it is.
Except maybe the B-zone. I don't think there's any B-zone.
There is a B-zone, but it already has commercial use in it.
No, D-zone definitely would apply.
Why D?
D because, for example, Winter Valley has assisted living now.
Oh, okay.
And they would, should be able to designate more units or less units or.
Or build them.
Fuller, Fuller have.
Do they qualify?
They, they could qualify, but they have not, they have not, they do not provide assisted living. They provide some additional services, but they specifically avoided the assisted living at the present.
Ed, I think I saw your hand up. No? Paul, I saw your hand up. Did you have a quick question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say maybe one of the criteria would be have to apply it to existing elderly individuals.
Interesting idea.
These are only one of the other D-zones. Are we killing the hospital properties?
Okay, that's an interesting definition.
What about Carrie College? They've got a school of nursing. Could they tie in assisted living?
They could slip one in.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think you slip one in. I don't think they need, I mean, it's an institutional use. I don't think they need our permission necessarily. It's an interesting question.
But if they're doing it for profit, they will lose their 501(c).
But they might not do it for profit. It might be a 501(c)(3).
Well, it's.
In which case we wouldn't.
But then they, they can use the existing zoning.
Right.
I mean, the, the question is, this is, these are, these are places that plan to make some dough from this use.
And provide, well, and provide a service to current residents.
A usable service.
Yes.
Most service providers do use a profit motive.
But the.
As do most businesses.
Identifying this as a commercial enterprise is important because that's what it is. It's not a, it's not a charitable endeavor. This is a profit-making activity and they fully intend to make profit.
Right.
I think that, you know, there are many for-profit activities that are, are great. I mean, the trash gets picked up by a company that makes profit. Nothing wrong with that, but it, people have to recognize that this is putting commercial uses into residential zones and that's encountered resistance in the past. And I think the board, the board has to, has to decide to, I mean, if the board wants to support such a thing, it has to be, it has to, I, I think it has to address that.
I know personally, I would prefer for them to be for-profit activities because I would rather.
Taxes.
Get the, get the property taxes than take more of our land, which we also already have a lot of nonprofit, you know, land that's tied up in, in non-taxable uses. I would love to make sure that we're getting tax benefits from this kind of development.
And as envisioned, these would be fully taxpaying properties. Also, for people that have parents that are in need of this type of facility.
Right.
I think that there's a real dearth of, of available locations in Milton.
On your actual article, I don't think there's enough process information. I don't think there's enough guideline, there's no good design guidelines in here. For example, there's no idea of massing or lot coverage, any open space requirements, any of the usual things that we have in our special permits. So I think this needs to be fleshed out a little bit more.
Okay.
In order to incorporate those things. I, you know, if we're going through a special permit process, I want to be able to do things like, say, the facades must, all facades must be treated with equal care. Might even go a little bit further. I'd like to know how much open space is going to be on the property, how much coverage will be allowed to parking, how much building coverage is going to be on, what are the height limitations? So all of that needs to be flushed out in here.
Bill, we had suggested and asked if you could use your network again to see if some, some other things. Have you had a chance to do that to see what other towns have dealt with?
I haven't. I just haven't. Go leave the whole thing and, and put it together like that.
I'd like to see if there's some that have, you know, more requirements or more.
I've looked at numerous towns and there is specific absence of any.
Assisted living.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and in a lot of towns, it's just because they were not included in zoning back in nineteen seventies.
Didn't exist.
That this all done by Board of Appeals.
Right.
And this would be the route that the one nursing home that exists in Milton went through.
Mm-hmm.
It would be the logical route for an assisted living facility or another nursing home to, to have. I think it would be better for the town if it went through a, a regular planning board process.
And I don't disagree and it's one of the reasons I want to add the information that we normally have in a special permit to this. Yes?
I, I think you may want to look at adding like a D3 because that would go back to each of the questions that you're asking for.
A D3 where?
So we've got D1 and 2.
Look onto section five and you'll see all the different.
Section five.
Yeah. That goes into building heights.
Yeah.
You know, in the different residence districts. Try, try, try page fifty-three. Building heights in resident D districts. And then it goes in and makes D1, D2. You could potentially pick up a D3, the building in.
Oh, okay.
Side yards, lot, frontages, building coverage, I mean, moving into section six.
Yeah, well, this is.
Fuller Village, this question also has to come up with a full route.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, that's what this should look like. It should be a Fuller Village, Winter Valley article, rather than a, rather than this.
You come in with the, with the Ds.
Setting out, setting out the standard that the board will apply and et cetera.
The difficulty with that is that it would require a change in the zoning map anytime.
If we just established a new district.
Yes, to establish a new district. The difficulty in that is it would usually take a year and a half lead time to propose something because it would have to go to town meeting on a piecemeal basis. That is very cumbersome.
I think attached cluster is in. Attached cluster is in that section and it's K. And, you know, it has all the stuff fleshed out and that's an overlay. This would be an overlay and you, you do it the same way the attached cluster or the cluster is, is, you don't have to change the zoning map for this.
Yeah, under section six. If you look at the different overlay zones in section six.
This is an overlay.
Yeah. Rather than creating a district, do it as an overlay.
Okay. I know that when phase two of, of Fuller Village went in, there was, there had to be a separate article.
But that Fuller Village wasn't an overlay.
Changing it to a D3 or.
Right.
But that was the only use you could use for that. In an E district, this is the only use you can do. But here, you can run a stable or you can do something else.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, why don't I try and flush this out before the fifteenth and get it to you and you'd be able to consider it.
Perfect.
Further at that time.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. All right, two other items. The final zoning article, which the language has been changed.
Which is?
It's the master plan one. It says big master plan in big letters.
Is that a zoning article? Isn't that a general? That's not a zoning article.
It's the article for us to discuss and it relates to zoning. It doesn't have to be a zoning article specifically. To see, so I've changed the language. It's to see what sum of money town meeting will appropriate to update, update the town's master plan. That's the first change. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one D, to allow the Board of Selectmen to accept grants or gifts for the purposes of this article and to act on anything related thereto.
I think that's a magnificent article.
You like it better than the last one, though.
No, I think that the warrant committee will say, no appropriation is recommended at this time and you will at least have been able to do your best to convince the warrant committee to give us some dough.
Always a worthy endeavor.
Without a, without, I think that it's a win-win situation.
Yes, Pete.
If we're going to consider this seriously, I mean, I think the hundred and fifty thousand dollars suggested.
Just an estimate for purposes of discussion, but yes.
I think that if indeed we intend to hire someone to, you know, lead us through a master planning process, a consult, I don't think that's adequate to do the, the entire master plan. That might be a first-year funding of a larger program. And I think, you know, if, if we're going to try to sell the town meeting, we have to either make clear that this is going to do our master plan or, you know, that this is, because I don't think a hundred and fifty gets you a consultant to do a top-notch master plan.
I've seen between sixty-five and two hundred thousand as estimates for doing a master plan. It depends very much on how you write the scope.
Depends on what you want.
Yes, exactly, and what you want.
Absolutely.
It also depends on the other studies you've done and we've done some. A master plan includes studies of the town's facilities and I know that they've appointed, the Board of Selectmen has appointed a committee to look at the fire facilities, fire station facilities. There's also the new consolidated facilities department coming online and I believe that they are.
We've done the library.
We've done the schools. I believe the consolidated facilities department has their own money to do or is asking for their own money to do that portion. So it may be that we will be able to assemble some of the pieces from other plans and not need as much as would otherwise be required. My hope was to get the board's approval to put, to send this to the Board of Selectmen to put on the warrant. The warrant committee's all-day meeting is in February, which gives us time to refine the amount of money we would actually need to do such a study. But given the discussions we've had just today about the various uses that have been proposed throughout town, and I think it's interesting that of these three major articles, all of them would extend commercial activity into residential neighborhoods in various forms. I think given some of the discussions we've had in the past few years about land use in town and also the changing circumstances, I was actually thinking about our current master plan, which was done in seventy-four when Gerald and updated in seventy-seven when Jimmy Carter was president. And I'm just thinking of all of the changes that have happened in the world since then. And it might make a lot of sense to relook at some of the aspects of the master plan. As I've said, we've completed some of the issues that were originally identified. We haven't completed others and the world has in many ways substantially changed. In other ways, it hasn't and I think it's about time that we looked at it. You know, this may very well go down in flames at the warrant committee. It may very well go down in flames at town meeting, but at least it gets, it started. The last time this was discussed at town meeting was when a citizens article was brought forward. The last time this was discussed at town meeting was when a citizens article was brought forward to do master plan. And if you remember, the citizens, I don't think it actually understood eighty-one D or had thoroughly read eighty-one D and proposed a process that actually wasn't consistent with the state. The other thing that this goes into is our last item on the agenda, which is the CLRPA support letter. You know, there is legislation in front of the Commonwealth that would change land use provisions and provide zoning reform. And whether that passes or not, we need to be looking at what Milton's doing. But if it does pass, there is a possibility, A, that we would need to revisit our zoning anyway to look at that, and B, there might be some additional funds, which is why I added the language of the Board of Selectmen accepting grants because it is possible we may be able to get some grant funds. But we won't know that until after the deadline for this article is passed, which is why I was reluctant to assign a real number to it and gave a nice round number for initial discussions. I wanted to give a sense of what the magnitude could be without committing ourselves to a number until we've had a chance to see what's happening on that. So, obviously, we're not voting on anything tonight, just in case. But I would certainly appreciate it if you guys would give us your consideration for our next meeting.
Well, I think the idea of getting started on some kind of a master plan work is a good, how we go about it and what's in the scope and all those kind of things.
And we have time to refine the scope well before the May town meeting. So, we'll need to get the number by February, but we have time to work on refining the scope between now and then. And you know, Pete, you had suggested the possibility of a multi-part process, and that might be another way of doing it. Is rather than requesting an appropriation for the entire thing in the first year, is do a portion of it in year one and a portion in year two. There is always the danger of extending a process out too long, especially a process that would require this much significant input. But you could do the appropriation for it over two years and then design the process.
Because typically, a master plan's a two-year process or something anyway.
It could well be a two-year process, yeah. I don't think you'd want to extend it beyond that. But it could easily be a two-year process and have plenty of information for us. But, you know, the other thing that a master plan covers is transportation and traffic circulation. And we have had that study in East Milton that has generated, I think, some controversy in its recommendations. And a master plan process could not just look at East Milton, but extend its ability to look at the transportation beyond that particular area of town and go beyond the remit of the original study. And I'm not faulting the original study. They only had so much money to do what, you know, they did. And it was meant to be limited by the terms.
Wasn't it a gift?
It was federal funding.
E O C D.
Yeah, and it was, it was limited by the terms of that funding to just looking at East Milton. But, you know, there are, there are other parts of Milton that would feed into that. So, any more discussion before next meeting? If not, the CLRPA letter. So, Eric Hove, who is the senior regional planner at the MIPC, sent an email to Bill asking if we would sign the letter of support for the CLRPA legislation, either as a board or as individuals. And if we wish, contact the state legislative delegation to urge them to pass the bill. And this is, CLRPA stands for Comprehensive Land Use Reform and Partnership Act, and would involve zoning reform. You've all got the benefits, key benefits, why we need to reform zoning.
But shouldn't we get a summary of the bill?
We could get a summary of the bill.
It says here that a more detailed.
Saying that we support a bill without knowing what's in it is sort of a dereliction of our duty.
Of our, well, not our fiduciary duty, but certainly our.
Our duty as planning board members, we should know what we're, what we're talking about.
I opened it up, and I was going to print it out, and I think it was a hundred and eleven pages or something.
It is very long, yes.
So, I decided I wasn't going to print it out.
That was the Land Use Reform Act was one of the worst pieces of legislation I've ever read.
Laura?
This is probably a refinement of Laura, and I have a feeling that I'm going to dislike it just as much. But Laura was terrible.
When was Laura? When was it proposed?
Five years ago.
Right, it was.
Five years? I thought it was a while back.
Yeah, I remember. I read that, and I thought that was a horrible state taking over.
We don't want a hundred pages. We want a nice crisp summary.
Do they have an executive? Well, they do have.
No, 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 no. What's in the bill by section?
But this, it does say here in his letter that is a more detailed comparison of CLRPA and the current law, and I didn't find that in our package.
I have the hundred and eleven pages printed out. Anybody that wants this in a three-ring binder.
No, we want, we want, we want our people at Mass Law Reform that we pay to do a job for the municipalities to come up with something a little better than that.
I mean, this says there's a more detailed comparison of CLRPA to the current law, and that's not here. Now, whether he didn't send it or we didn't get it.
Yeah, he says he's attached the one pager on how, and the more detailed, you're right. Did he not?
The more detailed one that kind of puts CLRPA against the current law. That's what.
I think that would be, that would be useful.
That would be useful. Bill, did he have a time on signing this letter? When is the legislation actually coming up? I mean, presumably, the signatures are no good after the legislation has passed or failed.
Is the legislature in recess right now?
Well, I was wondering. That's what I was wondering about the timing.
This letter is dated January first, two thousand and twelve, so I don't know if that's what they're aiming.
I mean, there's plenty of time for us to discuss it at our December fifteenth meeting.
Well, if we have the information to review, because I'm not going to read a hundred and eleven pages of.
Well, if you did, you'd certainly fall asleep quickly.
Well, I like you. Five years ago, I reviewed the proposed legislation. I thought it was awful. And I'd like to see a summary or something of what's proposed now, but I don't know.
Right, to see how these people have gotten religion.
So, why don't we, in the person of Eric, of Bill, ask Eric for a.
Bill loves his job.
If we could ask Eric for the detailed comparison, Bill, that would be very helpful, I think. Yeah? All right.
I agree with you.
I know, I have one more thing. I want to bring up before we.
Will you allow your privileged motion to stand down for a moment?
Yeah, I'll stand down for a moment.
I understand that.
Second.
Now, now.
That the special town meeting is going to be taking up the Community Preservation Act with the notion of putting, putting it on the ballot in April. I think we, between now and the special town meeting, should take up and, you know, either have a recommendation or position, or at least should discuss what our thoughts are related to the CPA. So, that should be on our agenda between now and the special town meeting, so we know how we're going to respond.
I agree. The special town meeting's January thirtieth, and, Bill, if we could also add that to our January twelfth. I think we'll have a lot to talk about between now and, or at our December fifteenth. But if we could add that to the January twelfth, I agree because I think we're going to be asked what our position is, given that we are the planning board and deal with land use, and the CPA definitely deals with land use, so.
Was Bill expected to take the minutes, too?
Only until we get a new person.
Until, when, when might that be? Really, it's not fair.
Six months.
Yeah, I, I agree. This is problematic.
There's eighteen hats.
The position was posted yesterday. I have asked, Kevin and I spoke yesterday morning, Kevin Murn and I. I've asked him to keep us informed of what's going on. If it's, if I'm available, I'd like to be part of the interviews, but I don't know what the interview schedule is yet, so I'll keep you updated. But my hope is that we get somebody who will fill the position as soon as possible, so.
And will it be the same position that Diane filled partial with the ZBA and the?
No, they've been posted separately. They were originally separate positions.
This is a separate part-time position?
Yes, they were originally separate.
One person may get both, or?
No.
No, they're going to be done as separate.
Part-time position and all that they're going to be responding.
They've retooled, they've retooled due to our retirement. They're going to take the one principal clerk from the building department, post it, they did.
Yeah.
They're going to take the part-time position that's in the building department and the ZBA, the ZBA, and put it together as one position, and this position will be out there as a half-time position.
I would say that if the economy ever begins to improve properly, the way we all hope it will, that at some point, we should consider requesting that the personnel board make this a full-time position because I believe Bill's been fairly swamped in the office. I don't know that the town has it yet, and we're a little late in the process for fiscal thirteen. But I would say for fiscal fourteen, if, if the money improves, we ought to consider asking for a full-time position. We do tend to put a lot on Bill's shoulders. Bill, can you look this up? Bill, can you check these towns out? So, you know, having a full-time position that could take on some of that work would be very useful. But unfortunately, I don't think this is a year.
Or an assistant town planner.
Or an assistant, now you're talking. So, I believe there's a motion away.
Can I just interject one thing before, and I understand where he's going? You didn't ask for my update.
I'm sorry, we didn't update. Ask for your update. What is your update?
Under the, under my update would be thirty-six Central Ave Affordable Housing, looking at the restricted deed issues. Dealing with the home consortium, the town belongs to a sell-short home consortium, which is Quincy, Braintree, Old Brook, and Milton. And we have a hundred thousand dollars of federal money that we can then take and put towards purchasing an affordable unit. Having a bit of an issue with the mechanism to spend that money. The other one that's related to what Mr. Sheffield was talking about was an updated zoning map. It was last updated by town meeting in nineteen ninety-seven, and it was amended in two thousand and two, but that wasn't by town meeting. And I have actually been working with Alan Bishop, the new GIS person at EPW, and we should have for the upcoming town meeting, a new zoning map that, for town meeting approval.
So, we need a seventh article, well, potentially a seventh article.
Yes, but that's one that I think we need. It needs updating, and the new one will be GIS-based versus. Mostly hand-drawn.
Right.
It will be intuitive. I think if you start using some of the GIS tools that are available through the engineering website, you'll find that things are much easier to use. Alan's really good at making things, keep it simple.
Good. Make sure then that you bring forward the article on the fifteenth for us to approve. So, that we've got that language to approve, to have town meeting approve the zoning map.
New zoning map, which there's really.
We don't have to have the zoning map by the fifteenth. We have to get the place hold off.
You didn't have it ready for tonight.
Not by the fifteenth.
You will have it ready for the fifteenth, and it's, I couldn't have it done by tonight. I can't have it for the fifteenth.
Oh, perfect, and that's even better.
We'll have a copy of it, and we can.
Peruse it.
Yes.
Cool, excellent. That's.
And I have one editorial, and that was on something that Alex actually said.
Usually when I have editorials, I try to keep my mouth.
This was a good one. Mr. Whiteside actually made a statement that actually could help this board bring about form-based codes.
Oh, you did, Alex?
Absolutely said.
That was an accident.
That was an accident.
We need definition to what we want to bring forward, and that is form-based codes. That is, how big can something be?
Form-based, well, go ahead.
I'm shocked that.
That Alex would propose such a thing.
Thank you. I will work on it.
One way you have it ready. There you go.
On that, I think I will ask for a vote on the motion on the table, which has been seconded to adjourn.
I'll, I'll second it again.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.